Seven oh one.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And are we on our own for the flag?
We are.
All right. Flag's behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And Marcia? Oh, correspondence, I'm sorry.
There are none.
None? Okay. And then public comments? None? Okay. All right. Consent agenda, does anybody have anything to extract? No? Okay, then we need a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Consent agenda. Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. All right. We are all the way up to reports. The class size ad hoc committee, did you wanna talk about that? Or do you want me to?
Well, I would just say that the board had agreed that we would look at this as an ad hoc committee in the second half of the year, once we had, you know, completed our work for the other ad hoc committee that has already worked this year. So it was time to... There is a motion that is on your list that you can use as a guide to sort of maybe guide discussion about what our purposes are. The purposes are, obviously, that we're looking to review the research on current... research on what is the best practice in class size for elementary schools. We wanna look at the class sizes in comparable districts, and we want this group to be able to make a recommendation to the board based upon all of that, as to do we maintain what we have, do we make changes, small changes, big changes, whatever they may be.
Okay. So we had discussed this both at the board and I think at some of the committees, you know, we had looked at class size and said, we're not gonna just discuss this at this group, we need a larger group of constituents to review it, similar to the group that did it a very... well, I was gonna say a very long time ago, but that wasn't polite, and Lynn was involved.
No, no, you can say it.
Yeah, a very long time ago. So if we're still of the mind that we should go ahead and create this committee and, you know, get people involved and do a class size review, then we should go ahead and make the motion and approve it. And now, the committee would operate from the board, it would be like the SRO ad hoc committee, that's what we're thinking?
They just come back with a recommendation.
Right. Right. Okay.
It's still a board decision.
Right. Absolutely. You know, just like the SRO came back. Okay. So...
Move that we establish the ad hoc class committee with a membership inclusive of the superintendent, administrator, three board members, two teacher reps, one non-certified, one community, and with the committee charge to review the current class sizes in comparable districts, current research on best practices regarding class size, and make a recommendation to the board.
A second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. So before we approve this, do we want to assign a chair to get this, like, going? I mean, I think this makes sense to chair from, like, the administrative situations' perspective, or was anybody thinking something else?
I'll never take a job away from a board member who would like to be the chair, but if that's necessary, and if it's a move, you know, I might be glad to chair it, or whoever you wish.
I don't think we have to decide that for motion.
Okay. I just wanna make sure...
The chair's prerogative to put a chair in place of any ad hoc committees and stuff.
Okeydoke.
I would say let's create the committee, see who's on the committee, and then we can decide about chair.
Okay. So is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. All right. So we'll just talk about, just the logistics of everybody. All right.
What's our time thing for that? I'm sorry.
I think we had said, like, we wanted to do it by the end of the year-ish, is what we thought, so not a big hurry, we were trying to get this done, we were just trying to...
Well, we are trying. Would this be for implementation for the fall '17, for '18, '19?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
So we wouldn't necessarily... So in a sense, yes, but we already have a budget moving forward with a certain number of classes and an additional 1.5 classrooms, and so, let me make sure I'm understanding this right, we wouldn't be trying to impact or change the current budget that we've got moving forward, it would be for future ones. Am I right? Or am I wrong? Am I left or am I right?
Well, I don't think it'd be fair to adjust this budget coming up.
That's what I'm saying.
Based on no recommendation.
That's what I'm saying.
So I would assume we are leaving things as is.
Right.
And that's how the budgets are perceived, because we're not gonna get a recommendation back from this until probably June.
Right. So we're talking about FY '20 then?
So it's possible that we might change class sizes, which would just impact the budget in terms of potential surplus or not surplus. I just don't think we can budget for it.
Okay. So if the recommendation is for changes that would increase the budget, we're talking about FY '20?
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. PTO update?
PTO, no.
Okay. Oh, oh!
So we met on January 10th. We had an evening meeting, which we don't usually have, at 6:30 to give more parents, teachers, the opportunity to meet. We had a slight, slightly more folks show up as a result. We're gonna try to do one more evening meeting before the year ends to allow for that type of participation. Let's see. We had the first PTO book fair occurred 11/27 through December 1st. It was a huge success. In fact, it was... we were upgraded as a school to the signature fair, which made it literally our most successful book fair we've ever had, and our book fairs are really successful as it is, so that was a wonderful moneymaker for us, lots of free books as well. Coming up, we have bingo night for the 4th, 5th, and 6th grades. That's gonna be held on February 9th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We're gonna be doing another book fair in the spring, and that will take place on April 9th through April 13th. And we'll have a book swap, May 14th through May 18th, which is where the children can bring in books from home, lightly used, and everybody gets to go home with at least three books as well, so it's a really cool thing, the kids love it. We're gonna be doing Arts Week, May 21st through May 25th, and we're gonna do Quasi-Family Night, was so successful in its first year last year, that we're gonna be doing it again this year.
You didn't have too many drop-offs?
No, I'm kidding.
Oh! There was a concern about the drop-off.
That really was a concern, actually, and we're still trying to figure out, because it's so confusing, because it is $25 a person, so if it's a mom and a dad and a little sister and a... as long as it's not, like, a, you know, a week-old baby, basically, one-year-old and up, $25.
Oh, really? Okay.
It's a fundraiser.
Yeah.
And it's only open to us, so that's hard to get that message out there that, you know, there's not like a... But we do have, for lower-income families, we'll be giving them free passes as well, so we're... reduced rates, I'm not quite sure exactly how that's gonna work, but we're also looking to try to partner with Bethany.
Okay.
And they... there's some conversations that have been happening, but they were kind of not sure if they were going to be able to do that, so we're hoping they join us, but we're really excited to be able to go there again this year. It's gonna be May 31st, which is a Thursday evening. We're probably gonna send a flyer out and start ticket sales in March, to give people plenty of time. We're also planning, and I'm not sure if it's gonna be able to happen, gonna happen this year, but we're in the planning stages of a parent social. So all year round, we have all the social nights for every grade, and so the bingo night is the last of them, and that combines the 4th, 5th, and 6th grades, but we're trying to, uh... I'm not gonna give any, anything away, but we're working on a fun night out for the parents and teachers, a grown-ups-only type social. So just to get, strengthen the community a little bit more, so that's it for now. Any questions?
I just wanted to say, I know the book fairs have been successful, and I know you guys have taken it to another level, and gotten, I think, because you're the signature school now, or whatever, you get, like, way more of the most popular books and the, you know, like, I heard the selection was the best we've ever had for books, so that's kudos to you guys.
Yeah, it was exciting.
I mean, I know it's a lot of work and it's...
It's really Marge, I think.
Yeah.
She is just been unbelievable, and now Lauren is kind of her understudy and is taking over for Marge, because she has a 6th grader and she'll be leaving us, which is devastating, but I think that it'll be in good hands, because Lauren has an awesome teacher.
Lauren Miller?
Lauren Esposito.
Oh, Lauren Esposito, oh, yeah. So she's got a lot of kids, so that's...
Yes, she does.
She's committed her all.
She'll be here a long time.
That's right. You like to see that.
Sign her up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And Bob, you're up. It's a parent's report.
Great. So I have a few announcements to bring to you tonight. First of all, I'd like to bring some great news, that Vito Esparro has been selected as our new facilities manager. Congratulations, Vito. I knew you were here a little while ago at our last meeting.
Yeah.
As you probably know, Vito has served as Beecher's interim facilities manager since July. He was selected for this permanent position from a large pool of candidates in a multi-step interview process. Over the past six months, Vito has handled all aspects of our facilities management, successfully led the department staff, and dealt with our recent and unexpected crisis with the burst pipe in a very thorough and highly dedicated manner. So congratulations, Vito. And we're glad to see him in this permanent position. We, as we close off that process and congratulate Vito, we have another process that's starting up this week. As you know, our special services director, Claire Kennedy, is retiring as of the end of this month, and we have assembled an interview committee consisting of certified and non-certified staff, as well as a representative from the Amity School District as well, and administration here, and we're moving forward with interviews starting this week. Just as another note, Claire, as I mentioned, is officially retiring at the end of this month, January 31st, but she will, and she has agreed to stay on past her retirement date on a limited basis, but an adequate enough basis to carry out the responsibilities and oversee the department until the new director is on board. We're anticipating that the new person will be on board anywhere between March 1st, as the earliest date, till July 1st, and July 1st is gotta be by then. We're hoping on the earlier side. So that is the latest and greatest on that. You may remember last year mentioned that there is a state requirement to provide mandated instruction to students in sexual abuse and prevention. There's also a mandate to require staff to be trained as well. Last year, we did train staff, and this year, we'll be providing instructional modules to all of our students in this area. This is done in a developmentally appropriate way, with language and instruction appropriate to the age of each grade. An agency called Project Teach from Milford will be providing this instruction to our students, and they've already provided this training to our staff last year, as I mentioned. This agency has also been the agency to provide this training to our sister districts in Bethany and Orange. Last year, we had a parent information night on this topic, where many parents did attend, and a letter will be coming out from the school administration to each family in the next week or so regarding this instructional module series that will happen. Each class will have one instructional module.
I have a quick question on that.
Yes.
The staff had a positive reaction to this vendor, this group that's doing the training for them and now for the kids, right?
Yes.
They're doing the training, they're talking to the kids.
Right. And there was, there was a very thorough training, there was an opportunity for questions and answers during that time from staff. We went back and we did a couple different training sessions, actually, we did it with certified and non-certified, so, yes.
And they liked this group, so that you're comfortable having them in?
Yes.
Yeah, and talk to the kids.
Same group that provided the parent night for the BOA, well, I mean, I was gonna mention it.
Oh, yeah, oh, for the BOA, okay.
When the BOA, all the towns got together and provided a night for parents.
Right.
These were the Forests that did that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, question, are they presenting during health class, or during...
Not for... Do you want me to... Do you want me to clarify now, because I was gonna do it in my... I'll do it now.
Oh, that's part of your report? I'm sorry.
Actually, Gina, when Gina gets to her report, she'll provide a few of the specifics on that.
Couple of the specifics, if that's okay?
Yes, that's fine, absolutely. Sorry I jumped the gun.
Nope, no, it's...
There may be some other questions, Nancy. On another topic, in regards to our current deficit for the current fiscal year, we have reduced our current operating budget deficit. It now stands at $99,852. It was more than a hundred, more like $150,000 the last month, and as you know, from past conversations, the deficit is due to unanticipated special education costs. In December, on December 16th, we completed the process to extend our current bus contract for two more years. This'll go through June of 2020, and we were very delighted to be able to do that and continue our three vendors, our owner-operators, B&amp;B, Chris Torrance and Dottie McCrum, to continue their excellent service to our students. I'll be making my budget presentation to the town boards of finance, select, and a combined meeting on Tuesday, this next Tuesday, a week from tonight, January 23rd at 7 o'clock in the main meeting room at Town Hall. Board members and the public are encouraged to be at attendance. We'll present our 2.64 total increased percent budget at that meeting. And last but not least, I think it's important for me just to briefly, but importantly, read just what was sent out to parents this past week in regards to an update. This was sent on Friday through Mrs. Prusko's principal update that goes out electronically. This is the information we provided to parents as an update on our pipe that burst over the December break, and the progress that's been made, and where we are and where we're going. So it said, "Parents, I'd like to bring you up to date on the progress that's being made in regards to the Beecher Road School rooms that were impacted by the burst water pipe that occurred over the December vacation. Over the past two weeks, an extensive cleanup process has taken place in all of the impacted classrooms, small group rooms, offices, and other areas. The process has included water cleanup, dehumidifiers, air scrubbers, inspections, and ongoing restoration work. One classroom, or homeroom, as I might say, Mrs. Franklin's 6th grade homeroom, and three small group rooms were released back to us last week, last Thursday, after all work was completed, including a top-to-bottom cleaning. The Woodbridge Building Inspector, Fire Marshal, Fire Chief, and the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Health Inspector were all called upon to inspect this first group of rooms. All officials gave full approval to reoccupy the four rooms. Mrs. Franklin's class moved back into their homeroom on Thursday. Work in the other six classroom homerooms, as well as the other spaces, will continue in the coming weeks as we go through the same comprehensive process. As other classrooms are completed, ranging in time from, we think, two to six-plus weeks, they will go through the same cleaning inspection and approval process, and we will keep parents informed as their child's classroom is ready to be reoccupied. I do want to emphasize that the health and safety of our students and staff are of primary and utmost importance as we move through this process. In addition, proactive steps have been taken in the recent two weeks to check all of our other heating and HVAC units to ensure that no other issues will take place. In addition, I'd like to let you know that our students and staff have done an outstanding job of being flexible during these past two weeks. It's, there was no site that I will just say anecdotally, there was no site that I could compare to when I came in the first day after vacation to see every employee helping each other out in terms of moving things, getting rooms ready in alternate locations. It was a sight to be seen. It was just a true testament of the certified and non-certified staff that we have here at Beecher Road School. It was amazing. So we thank all of our employees for that. I'd also like to thank the great partnership that we have between town and school. We've had, we've seen Brad Parsons here countless times, Sean Rowland, Joe Cappucci, Terry Gilbertson. They've all been here to inspect, to help, to lend us, lend support, and also First Selectman Heller and Finance Director Jenepys have also been very, very helpful. So we really feel a real camaraderie and a real partnership, and I said I hope we can return the favor use sometime as well. So, parents, thank you for your support and understanding during this time. The Beecher Road School, spirit of patience, cooperation, and teamwork will continue to guide us through this process. And I think that concludes my superintendent's report.
And I just wanted to say about the whole burst pipe thing, I mean, all I've heard is good things about the cooperation with the staff, that, you know, we basically, you know, only lost two hours, you know, we had a delay to try to, you know, get things ready so the kids could be in a replacement classroom, which is amazing considering the amount of water, so, you know, really, congratulations. I mean, it's one of those things that would happen, it's horrible, and, you know, and things will be better after. All the teachers will say, "Oh, I love making classrooms."
Yes, they will. "Oh, it looks brand new."
Is there any questions for Bob on any of these topics?
So are we looking at some way of sort of better notification when there's change in pressure in our pipes? Is there, you know...
So, yes, good point.
I've got censures all of my house for water, because I had it leak once.
Didn't want to go through that again.
So now they're everywhere.
So in the process of dealing with the situation, we have changed our, changed our strategy to go with one vendor, one service that provides everything, monitoring as well as service, which was not the case before this. We had a separate maintenance vendor, separate from controls, which were both separate from the installer, and now we've gone back to the installer, the equipment is now also the service provider and the controls monitor. And so we're going through a systematic process right now of making sure that those kinds of notifications... It was actually a notification of humidity that actually alerted Vito to the fact that there was a problem, so we did get a notification. It was a lot of humidity, but we are changing that, and that's part of the process with our new vendor, that... I think that, anything we had from our facilities meeting today that we had just before this?
They did say, too, that they've added some additional, that the units will automatically shut down.
There's some new protocols that they're putting in place to, before the ERVs, which are taking the cold air from the outside, which was the issue, are gonna essentially below 40 degrees, that are gonna shut down so that the cold air just isn't...
Gotcha. Okay. Gina's turn.
Gina's turn.
Thanks for the invitation on that. Any questions?
Okay, no problem.
So welcome to the new year, everybody, and I want to reiterate what Bob said about the support and the cooperation, I mean, people just pitching in, carrying, I don't know, Bob was almost kinda to tears, he was like, "I can't believe this, this is amazing."
I really, really, it was amazing. It was great. Drones of people just walking up and down the hallway with stuff, amazing.
And the students haven't skipped a beat. They really, really haven't skipped a beat, you know, and so from the technology end of it, you know, setting up the, you know, their iPads, or using the smart boards, or having their desks be in the rotunda, and, "Oh, I really need this out of there." So every once in a while, you might see a student going to get something, but almost everything came with them, there was space, so, so kudos to everybody. And we are here in our mid-year, and so at this time of year, kindergarten conferences will be happening. It's such an awesome time where it's a personal conversation with parents and the kindergarten teachers, and you can hear an update about how your child is doing. Also, speaking of mid-year, we are in the middle of our mid-year universal screen, our assessments. It gives us that temperature check of where students are at the middle of our school year. And if you remember, the universal screen happens three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, and we do have some other assessments at this time of year that just help us to give a little better look and added data points for where our students are performing against our benchmarks. My update is really brief tonight. I want to address what Lynn had asked about the schedule and this upcoming mandated curriculum that we have to... We wanted it to be as least invasive as possible, but we also had to work with the Project Teach, and so what we did was we took 40-minute segments, and so they said about a half an hour to 40 minutes, so we blocked, you know, an hour for each, and we are going to bring two classes together at a time, no more than that, because it's a conversation and they want children to feel comfortable asking questions, so we'll bring two classes together. Our intent is to have it in the rotunda. We have pushed this back a little due to the fact that the rotunda is currently in use. So we have drafted, Project Teach has sent us a letter, we've added some components to that letter, that should be going home to students in the next few days. January 24th is the first date for which Ms. Gillian, as she is called, will be here to talk to our children. So because it's developmentally appropriate for every grade, so two 3rd grade classes, another two 3rd grade classes, and then, you know, two 2nd grade classes, two 2nd grade classes, so that's the schedule over four days. So we did have a complete schedule made, we did, do obviously have to change some of our dates, and we will get that information out to parents, but we want the flyer and the letter going home, it'll be within the next day or two, and we just had to get it on their letterhead, we sent it out to them today. So certainly, Gillian Soto, who is the outreach teacher, has made herself available, her contact number is on there, and my information is also on there for questions, if parents have questions about it. And, you know, some of our partners have already got through this, Bethany has already done this with their students, I've talked to folks over there, and it was, it was completed, they said with ease, with ease. So, you know, some parents had some questions, they asked, and so far, only positive. And again, we did have the parent night, and we had, for those that did attend, we had positive feedback last year, I believe you were there, Lynn?
I was there, yes.
So for the folks that did attend, there was some positive feedback from that as well.
And can I ask one more question? The classroom teacher will attend with their group, so there'll be two classroom teachers and the presenter.
So we will also have Ms. Buzzard, health teacher, and Ms. Demontch, they will be attending some of the sessions, at least one at every grade level, so as we look forward, we may change how this is presented. So we have Ms. Demontch from our support staff and Ms. Buzzard attending at least one at every grade level so that they can, you know, be a part of that, because ultimately it may take place in health class, it might be part of that curriculum, but we wanted to make sure that we have professionals come in and give this as the first go-round.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep. So now I get to end on a little bit of the beginning of a new year, even though it's the middle of our year, and if anyone has a 1st grader, they're going to know exactly what I'm talking about, Ms. Sherman has a 1st grader. There's so much growth that happens right around now, like, January, you start to see light bulbs and kids kind of start to take off, but something that happens in 1st grade is something called 1st grade magic. And there may be some 1st graders watching, who knows what 1st grade magic happens to all of our 1st graders, and they are, you know, there's some sprinklings that are on their desk when they return, but it is a little bit of the magic that comes with teaching. And I was sitting in a 1st grade today, just happened to be in a 1st grade, and they were doing some practice with some math facts, and the little girl sitting next to me said, "I wish I still had my 1st grade magic," but we got to take it home, so the actual stuff got to go home. And I said to her, "But your 1st grade magic stays with you, it's inside, it's there with you for the rest of the year." And she went and did her math facts, and she went like this, "Yes!" at the end, and it just honestly brought that magic. You know, it is such an exciting time for them, but they grow, and all of our students do, but I see 1st graders at this time of year, the growth that Beecher and the choir with Ms. Teasack sitting there, but to see what happens to 1st graders when they come back from that winter break, and it is amazing, and that solidified it for me today, so that's why I'm ending my update on this. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Thanks.
Well, that's okay, because, okay, so now you have to go to the survey.
Right. So it's that time of the year, every other year, where we administer the Panorama, Panorama is the name of the company, the vendor, the spring family survey. This was last administered in 2016, and before that, it was administered in 2014, and the survey is given out to all parents, all families, and it's roughly 40 questions or so, and it's been, it's been a way to measure, or just take a dipstick as to how we doing, what areas are bubbling up as really, really, really successful, are there areas that we need to give some attention to? It's not just one indicator, but it's something that does help us. And so Panorama, our vendor for this, is really, really kind of, is sort of the go-to in the industry for most districts in terms of if you really want to get real professionals, there are other groups for sure, but they are really certainly a great group to work with. We are also required on a, every two- to three-year period to give a climate survey. And what most districts are doing at this point in time is that, knowing that sometimes getting people to fill out a survey is not the easiest thing and we want to try to have the highest percentage possible of responses, most districts, and it's been done in many places in Connecticut, are trying to go with the integrated survey approach, which means it's an all-in-one. The questions help to assess just the general, just the general school in terms of what's going on, general questions, I guess you will, and also has questions that help us with our teacher evaluation processes because there's required questions that address in the teacher evaluation model in terms of the formula for that process. And also, to be able to include climate questions. So, in looking at our Panorama survey again very closely this year and having seen surveys for years, it was my firm belief that this survey includes all of the critical questions that a climate survey that we would want to have. And so, I sent this survey to the state consultants for, for climate plans and she responded back saying, "This survey does it all, Bob. I might add one additional question, but otherwise, this survey completely meets the requirements and needs of climate surveys for the state of Connecticut and it also meets your general needs." The only question she would add to the survey was, "My child or children has or have at least one trusted adult in this school that they have a special connection with," which is a typical question we like to have. So, so my recommendation, or at least my, my, my process in moving forward unless there's questions or whatever, is to use this Panorama survey, one survey that meets the needs of everything, add this one question and when we get results back, we can continue to have an apples-to-apples comparison for all the other questions minus the one that helps us to see from year to year or every other year, where are we going and how, how are we doing? This survey is only for parents. Panorama can also create companion surveys that are shorter and more developmentally appropriate for the kids and also create one for staff. And so, with that in mind, that's the direction I would go in as opposed to trying to go with anything else to show if there is continuity and consistency. So, that's, that's sort of the big picture on surveys as we move forward. We need to make some decisions soon if there's any questions. Otherwise, this is the kind of way I would be moving forward on this process to complete what we need to do for our requirements.
So, instead of having a parent survey and then a climate survey that goes to just the kids, did the climate surveys to go to staff as well or just the kids?
So, the last time it was done, yeah, in 2015, there was a climate survey, 15 questions each that went to parents, kids, staff. In 2013, there was a different climate survey that was sent to parents, kids, and staff. So, there's no continuity from those two years. And so, so we would get, each group would get one survey that would meet everything.
All right. I like the idea of one survey because we've had, really according to the survey people, really, really excellent response to the parent survey and I'd hate to have that lessed at all by having, you know, multiple surveys. I know in some of the subcommittees that we talked about maybe adding a more directed question about homework, you know, to get, you know, to see if we can see, you know, because there's been a lot of discussion about that. I don't think that there's been any other suggestions unless anybody else had things that they thought, you know, because I know we want to keep it consistent, but if we're adding another question, you know, and maybe we want a more directed, you know, homework question, or at least look at the homework question and make sure that we think we're getting the information back on that. But, other than that, you know, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at all the questions and, and, you know, we've looked at it and I know how we look at the responses, we get all the raw data so we can look at just the strongly agree, you know, we can look at it however we want because we get the raw data back from Panorama, which is, which is nice. So, I know we're not, we don't have to approve anything. I like the idea of a single survey. The only thing I do is just if we could look at the homework question and just make sure...
Well, there's a question that says the amount and level of difficulty of homework to implement to a child is important.
Okay.
I don't know how much more.
Yeah. And they're, all right. I know that that's still an area that we might want to look at, but it's up 3%.
Yeah, well, and I think we need...
Yeah. Well, you gotta be, yeah. Yeah. Be careful.
Gotta be careful about it.
Yeah. I understand.
You know, you know about the being careful. All right. So, okay, so, so that was the only comment and if people are comfortable with the question, then I think we're good. And did anybody have any other comments about separate things or anything?
If you're going to survey, people can better keep the survey constant over time. Otherwise, looking at this data from year to year is...
Like, it's not going to be helpful, is it?
It's better to keep it as...
Okay. Great. We have to add one question though if we're going to make, make a climate survey.
And I think we can still extract, we can, we can take that one question off when we're trying to look at it, if we're trying to...
If one question is there, yeah.
We're going to be up there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Did anybody else have any comments? I think, thank you for that. Okay. So, we are down to facilities. I know we've gotten a lot of facilities updates already. Did you have anything else or...
No. We, we met this evening, we discussed the pipe burst and subsequent flooding and repairs at length, had a follow-up discussion from our ground store that we conducted in the fall and decided to push back our invitation to First Selectmen and various town committees to, when the weather got a little bit nicer, late winter, early spring. Who knows?
We have insurance for all of this, I think. Insurance covered all this, was there any?
$5,000 deductible. Everything will be covered. We'll end up, we'll end up getting a lot of new equipment and a lot of new furniture due to this.
You had said the coffee center was affected?
So, the, so the coffee machines were not impacted. We had them come and check them out. The coffee machines are several inches off the, off the ground and there was only, and there's carpet in that room, so the carpet soaked up the water. So, we're good there.
All right. Finance?
I actually...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think that you covered most of finance already. The presentation is, you know, kind of the next big thing for finance, the 23rd at 7:00, 7:00 right at Town Hall.
Right.
Okay. Curriculum.
Curriculum met on Thursday, January 11th. We had a presentation on responsive classroom that was given by Grace and Peter Halsey and Joe DePalma, covered an overview of what responsive classroom is and some changes that have been made in responsive classroom. They talked about the domains, the four domains of responsive classroom and the timeline that they've followed and what are some of their next steps. We felt, the curriculum committee felt that because there have been so many questions that have arisen about responsive classroom, that this would be a good presentation to come to the full board. So, I think we're going to be planning that for sometime in the future.
Well, that will lead into upcoming meeting presentations. I'm thinking maybe February.
Wonderful.
Because we have time.
Okay. And the second part of...
Wait, I think Steve had a question.
Question, question. So, the one thing that's a little surprising to me is that we still have 11 faculty...
And we did discuss that.
That are not trained, because we discussed this at board meetings for the last six years and I was, from presentations, was always told that everyone has been trained who is a classroom teacher, that we still had a few special things, but that we had 100% doing responsive classroom, I'm just not sure how we do. So, I will just say that some of that number is attributable to the people who've been hired over the last couple of years, because I did not offer last summer due to those financial constraints, I did not offer any kind of a training last June or this past August, sort of to catch the people who were just newly hired up. So, part of that group is newly hired staff over the last couple of years, which is not a lot of people, but there's a few, there's certainly a few. There are a few that are represented in that number that have been around for a few years and still have not been trained. And I think the main thing, we talk about the training, is that the training has always been a, a lot of it's been offered, but it's always been offered, you know, after the school year's over and you have to elect to go to it. So, we, we do want to find a way, our goal would always be to have 100%. And we made a big commitment to doing this as a, as a board years ago, so my, my question, which I guess I can ask when they come and present, is what's the metric that shows us this was a good investment of our time and energy and resources and did we get the desired outcome? So, that's for future.
Okay. Yep. Anything else on responsive classroom? Okay, and the second part of the curriculum committee meeting, Claire Kennedy made a presentation on tag identification process and talked about some post-changes in that process. And our next meeting is part two of the social emotional, social emotional curriculum. Is there any questions? All right. Can we need lecture series? I know Nancy's not here, I don't know if you...
Yeah, and I emailed Nancy, but I haven't gotten a response back. She had talked about a possibility of the third week in March perhaps being the timeframe for an initial presentation.
Policy, Nancy's not here. We did meet, there were policies included in the consent agenda, which are up for the 30-day review now and I can't remember what's next on policy.
We didn't, we, we're going to go back one more time just on homework, just like all the other homework. There is, and I have not provided any more policies at this point for the committee to review. We'll be looking at that.
Okay. Aces, I don't have anything new from, from Aces. I was at the last meeting, there were no, nothing that needs to rise to this group. And Cave, I don't know if you have just like a short, short report because we're trying to get to them.
Sure. Just maybe highlight, not get into too much, but some trainings coming up, the Alliance District Roundtables tomorrow, Cave-Capt Convention Committee meeting the next day, current legal issues on sexual identity, displaced students and social media is January 24th, and school start times is February 15th. The NSBA Advocacy Institute is February 4th through 6th, and the Cave Day on the Hill is March 7th. So, trainings that they specifically asked me to tell everyone about. Quickly, I guess policy highlights is, one is website accessibility for the disabled and there's just some information on there to make sure that we are, making sure we are up to date on that.
We're looking at that.
Okay, great. And then the other one is sexual harassment issues in schools, which sounds like that's not being addressed, but there are some policy information and I guess US Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos has an interim Q and A online if anyone's interested in that. She has some information on that, guidance for schools and whatnot, so. And there's some interesting articles in the journal. Trying to think, I just want to... Just read all of it, it's all interesting.
Yeah. And hopefully people do.
We all get it.
Yeah. People do. You know, folks like to kind of do the highlights, but one thing, his expulsions are down. Data shows that rate of expulsions have declined in the past five years, that's nice. There's an article on why are we still failing African-American and Latino male students that was interesting. A delegate assembly, and actually the one that I think, well, there's one on opioid epidemic, new board membership information, the one on can boards do more to heal a divided nation, that was a really good one, so if folks want to read that, that was, I think, a good topic for us to read, so. That's my quick interview.
Thank you very much. Upcoming meetings, we know now we're going to have a responsive classroom presentation in February. Is there anything else in February?
So, with the information I've provided to you about surveys tonight, I think that would take the place in my mind of having to present to you, in a sense, I kind of did present to you a little bit here in terms of what we're looking at doing. So, I would, that was something that we were considering, so I would take that off the list. The accountability report, the index report will not, it looks like by all accounts, will not be ready for February, same, same story as last year, for March. So, that, the only other one that we had on the docket possibly was to just highlight again summer programs going forward, what are we doing for our summer programs? Are there any changes? If that would be helpful to the board to know that, if that's something that the board would want, we could, we can provide a brief...
The only thing, because I, I think that we are looking at fee changes because of the contribution of the summer programs toward security, maybe, maybe just an idea. And the other thing that we always talk about is just the coordination of the communication, just because we have lots of programs, you know, we have RAC, we have SEF, we have Extended Day, all of that. So, from my perspective, I would just like to hear about how we're averaging, I mean, everybody has their own separate online sign-up, you know, so just a little bit about how we're getting that out to parents and then, you know, what, what we're looking at for fee changes to support the, the security and, you know, people read on that and, you know, what they think that's going to mean or maybe it's, you know, small enough, it's not going to have an impact.
Okay. All right, so we will, we will provide that in February as well as responsive classroom. We'll do a repeat performance.
Okay. Does there's other, other comment? Do you have anybody? Nope. Okay. Then we are going to go into executive session?
How moved would we go into executive session?
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay. So, we'll just take a, just a short break while everybody else leaves.
And we will not have anything for public session afterwards.
What?
We're not going to have any public session.
No, no, there won't be any. We're not coming out of this with anything that we present, so. Okay?